Got to make them ease on the feet, man. My feet getting old. Down in the back today, too.
You?
Uh, 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 in case it's gonna be Gerald, uh, pleasure is gonna be mine. Yeah. All right. We're ready. We find everything here. Nine o'clock straight. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
We're gonna now call, I'll be the order. We'll ask everyone if they will put the phone on vibrator or turn them off. Uh, Carl, let's include you, too. We're gonna ask if Gerald, if you will leave us in a prayer and mine, if you leave us in the pledge.
Let's pray. Father, Lord, thank you for another day you've given us, Lord. It's the season, Lord, to come and, and praise and give you, uh, continue praise, Lord, for your birth. And, Father, we just thank you for that. But, Father, we just pray for our country, Lord, and our county as we come and, and give you praise for the seasons that we make, Lord, that would always be pleasing to you. And, Father, as our country, Lord, we just thank you for the people that are always defending for our rights, Lord, and we'd ask that you would give them strength, Lord, that, uh, they would continue to defend. But, Father, we pray for our leaders, Lord, as decisions are made, Lord, to be able for us to come and, and have meetings in peace like we are today, Lord, and, Father. But, most of all, we just thank you for who you are and what you do in our lives. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen.
Okay, stand, attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. You travel too much, man. All right, Ronnie.
Yes, Mr. President. You should have before you the November the twenty-first board minutes. I would ask if there are no changes, the board would please approve said minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Carl, second by Sheila.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. All right. Concerned citizens, you got any, uh?
None on the list, but, uh, Mr. Joe Paxton is here. It's listed under public hearing, but it should be a concerned citizen. I apologize for the air.
All right. We'll get into our schedule matters. Mr. Joe Paxton? Come up and share with us.
Okay, basically, basically what I'm trying to do is get the county to take over North Brooks Road.
Say that again. I can't hear you.
Can, can you hear me now?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Uh, what I'm trying to do is get the county to take over North Brooks Road. Mr. Jackson, John Jackson, has tried several times and, uh, something has always fallen through the cracks. But, uh, so I was talking to this gentleman over here and he told me that we'd have to start over again, so that's where I am, starting over again.
Where, where is it, kinda sorta?
Pardon me?
Where is North Brooks Road, kinda sorta?
Do you know where Sharon Road is?
Yeah.
Okay, it's off Sharon Road.
It, it go up sixteen east, uh, Sheila.
Uh-huh.
Until you come to Sharon, uh, turn left, then first road, you turn left again. Then North Brook, the little pass that turned right off of Brooks Road. And, uh, Mr. Paxton, uh, on reading some minutes from back several years ago, I think this North Brook been brought up several time. And some things happened and it never got to a point for the board to make a decision. It was passed out to a committee. Uh, I don't know did the committee ever make the report. Uh, they told, the lawyer was asked to look into it. I don't know did the lawyer look into it? So, you doing the right thing to come back and try to start.
That's why we have to start over again. Yes, sir.
Unless, Mike, you done got some information on it?
I mean, the process has never changed. It's a couple of supervisors. Must go out and look at the road and see if it's suitable to become a public road, if it's for public convenience and necessity. And that wasn't done, so I don't know what the lawyer would do.
Well, we gonna, we gonna try to make that, uh, uh, put that committee back together then. And, uh, and that committee was, uh, supervisor Steen and supervisor, uh, Banks. So, that'll be my motion, uh, to let them look into North Brook Road again. Uh, motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. They gonna get on it, uh, Mr. Paxton.
Now, can I be informed when they go and look at it? The, the main, the main reason is I wanna make sure they're on the right road because it's a little bit hard to find.
You have to make, uh, you had to talk to them on when they going out there.
Okay.
We're looking at, um, I would say Wednesday.
Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay, could you give me a call?
Uh, we probably could.
I know exactly where it's at. I can, I can, I can tell them.
I think we'll find the road.
Yeah, I know where it is.
We'll find the road.
Okay, yeah.
So, so, I'm hoping they'll have their report with the first meeting in January or the second week in January.
If we can have a second meeting.
Yeah, it doesn't matter either way. We, we'll go out there.
The first, uh, meeting in January, uh, they'll be ready to get their report back to the board.
Okay.
I don't know what that date is on, but it'll be the first Monday.
Okay, so should I come back here or?
Yes.
My, my main thing is I want to be able to follow up on what's going on.
Better come back.
It's the third, third of January.
Come back, okay. The, the first meeting in January.
Third of January.
Third of January, okay.
And that will be a Tuesday rather than a Monday because the Monday's a holiday.
Right, okay.
It'll be Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
That's it, thank you very much. Okay, good, thank you. Thank you.
Any more concerned citizen? If not, we'll move right on to our consent item.
What about that public hearing? Was that?
No, that was it.
That was it.
No, it was in the wrong place. It was a concerned citizen.
Oh, okay.
He just put it in the wrong spot.
Okay.
I have the motion on, uh, consent item.
Various projects, subject, just one clarification. What's various projects on J H and H?
What number is it?
Uh.
Oh.
Various projects means, but.
Those various projects.
Those, those architectural projects?
Those are architecture projects. They are the sheriff's office and one other. Um, these are things that have been previously approved by the board. It, it's just actually approving the contract.
Okay.
Okay. Motion.
All right, motion by Trey, the second.
Second.
Second by Sheila, in this other discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. All right, we're all the way down to supervisors. That is, uh, federal legislation, monitoring service, but let's know.
Mr. President, this is our lobbying contract for the year and as same as it is for this year going into next year, so I'd make a motion for approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Gerald, second by Carl, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Now, we're down to our business item, election commissioner. Mr. Pat, Tuesday.
Good morning, everyone. Um, Ms. Ray was going to join me, but she is ill this morning. And, uh, I have three items there. The first is to approve, uh, election systems and software as a sole source. We were, um, presented in your packet a, uh, letter from, uh, their council saying that, uh, they are the sole and exclusive developer and licensor of the E S and S software, which is what we use. And so, we need to do that then to approve some following, uh, contracts that we were trying to present. But I understood from our, um, uh, from, um, the administrator that we needed to do these in three pieces, if you did not mind.
Mrs. Chairman, I've met with the circuit clerk and the E S S vendor on all three of these.
Mm-hmm.
I had some concerns and they went back and modified them to address my concerns, so I think all of it's okay, all three of them.
All three of?
Correct. We thought it would be easier to have it be run a yearly contract than our, all of them being, have one run from January to August and then have one pick up from September to December. And we're just trying to get it all for this coming year, have it all on one page so that it just, when we looked at it, we'd know what period we were talking about.
Is there a motion for all three of?
Is it okay to do all three of them or do you want separate motion?
I think you have to, separate motion. Sole source one first.
Okay.
And then, so you would have to bid it out.
All right, motion on number thirty-three then, sole source.
I, I think that's thirty-four, sole source, source declaration.
Thirty-four is the sole source. Thirty-three is a renewal of a pre-existing contract, which does not require a sole source designation, but, but the order doesn't matter so much as long as the sole source is declared prior to thirty-five.
All right.
I make a motion to approve item thirty-three, approved election service agreement renewal.
Motion by Gerald, the second.
Second.
Second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Now, that was.
Sole source, thirty-four.
Sole source. Now, we need a motion on thirty-five, thirty-three and thirty-five.
That, the, what I made the motion on was thirty-three.
We got thirty-four's next.
Thirty-four's next. I make a motion on the sole source decoration.
All right, my numbers on mine is wrong, then.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
All right, got a motion by Gerald, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Then make a motion for, uh, approved maintenance software and support service agreement.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
All right, same motion by Gerald, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you, board.
Hey, question before you leave, election commission.
Yes, sir.
Uh, back several months ago, I think you all were looking at, uh, some precincts, trying to,
geez.
uh, get some new precincts, maybe consolidate some precincts. Have you all got that ball rolling yet?
Um, District Three and I have. Each one is approaching their own supervisor is kind of how we thought you wanted us to handle it. And so, I've been talking with Mr. Steen and, uh, we are working on that now, but I really can't speak for the other four. We're going to meet in the morning, though, so I can certainly bring it to their attention that they need to get with you and handle that.
I, I know, uh, District Five, I mean, uh, election commission been having some family issues.
Yes, sir.
So, I would kinda like to see that before the election next year, get all that stuff kept together if we can.
I would love the same because with the redistricting, we will be changing some things already, so I think it would be the ideal time to do that. Have y'all had any feedback from the Madison County School, uh, Board about us using three or four of the schools? That would be so helpful to us in some areas of the county that, uh, don't have as large of meeting facilities. The churches are smaller, the, there are not existing community centers and that sort of thing. Have y'all had any input or can you direct me in a way that I could contact the superintendent? I have already written to her and it was assigned to one of the other deputies, but then I've not had any more correspondence back. And we listed the five schools that we were sort of looking at, but, uh, if any of y'all have any input or insight that would be beneficial, we would love to pursue that. Because, um, if they would calendar with us, there's a lot of the schools that if it was a teacher workday, we could still use the facility as a voting precinct because they would be probably a different part of their building.
Mr. President, I would, uh, just suggest that the administrator work with the election commissioner to, um, contact the school district. And just see what, what schools that they are requesting.
Okay, okay, that'd be a start. Thank you. That would be great.
First I'm hearing of it, yeah, that's no problem at all.
Okay, that would be good. Thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, moving right along. Emergency management director, Mr. Alvin Jones.
Good morning, board.
Morning.
I was coming to y'all this morning to ask you all to approve item, line item thirty-six.
Line item thirty-six. All right.
President.
Yeah.
I met this, I met with Mr. Jones this morning. Now, this is, this is a request from the Canton Fire Department from City of Canton, through the Canton Fire Department to ask this board to provide funds to purchase equipment for City of Canton, Canton Fire Department. Uh, it's a flag for me because, of course, it becomes a donation to municipality. And you can't do that now. Mr. Jones said this morning that we've done it for Rizlan and the administrator, so if it's, if it's under some emergency authority, some emergency.
Yeah, and I.
Program under him, that's something I don't know about, but, you know, no problem with it except you have to find the right way to do it.
Okay, and, uh, and for what I know about it, um, it, uh, it's not a nine-one-one issue. It would be followed under more of a, um, um, it, it's, it's a software that enabling them to, uh, it's like fire breach, report writing, uh, it'll let, let them, um, know about the fire hydrants when they test them, the trucks, uh, even when they go to call. So, it's just, uh, it's just a software that they have to keep them from going to the station. They can handle all their paperwork out in the road where they are.
What it is, is not the problem, it's how to pay for it, you know, I mean, I'm sure it's necessary.
Mike, what's the difference between the fire station and the police department? Us helping the police department with nine-one-one?
If it's.
Is there a difference?
I mean, there's some, there's some emergency funds from his account. Another, the police powers of the county, emergency authority of the county, you could do it. But, I mean, is this what every this is we ask for money for, so my pants, City of Canton, so. Why is that not a donation?
Can we table this for two weeks for more, just for more research and discussion?
I'm fine with it.
I don't mind helping the city as long as I, you know, it's.
Yeah, we don't wanna go to jail.
The better way to do it, perhaps, is that, you know, the City of Canton, through the Canton Fire Department, uh, is under contract to the, to the Central Madison County Fire District, okay? That's a contract. So, and I'm sure that contract is working well. So, if the Central Madison County Fire District Board would come and ask this county, now, they are also independent, but maybe this county, there's a way to maybe put this fund in their contract, to let their contract be increased to the Canton Fire Department to provide services to rural Madison County, that's a better way to do it.
All right, uh.
I think somebody needs to research it and you guys figure it out and come back.
Yeah, let's have it worked out. Uh, Alvin, you in the mic, and Central Fire District by next meeting.
Okay, no problem.
It shouldn't take that long to work it out. Greg, you included in that, but.
Mr. Griffin, I, I, and you're right, I agree with that. But one thing, what I just heard, I think I heard, that I, I wanna make sure that when they bring it back, that just because we have a contract with someone else that, uh, possibly purchased this underneath it and they're not gonna use it, but give it to somebody else to use, guys, that's, that's kindly shaky, if that's what I heard. And I hope I didn't hear that.
But at least, no, no, well, I mean, the Canton Fire Department is under contract to provide fire services to rural Madison County.
Correct.
And this would be used out soon.
Okay.
To assist the fire department to provide services to rural Madison County.
And, and that's okay.
And that's different to me than what he's after.
Make sure that that's what it is and not assume it, you know?
I will. I get it and cover all those bases and get with the county attorney administrator.
All right, and, and keep in mind, uh, we want to move forward legally, but we do want to help the cities.
Yeah.
We don't wanna put up a, a, a wall where we end up can't help the cities, uh, that's all the cities of the county.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. We, we'll have that ready next week, next of meeting. All right, Tim, you up?
Good morning. First time I have is a task order number four to the master services agreement with Stan Tech. This is to design two bridges on Yandell Road that are currently low rated. We plan to upgrade those using E R B R funds that we were awarded this year.
Got a motion by Sheila, second by Trey, discussion. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? When you get those, uh, bridges designed and ready to be worked on, I hope you can do them both at once.
The plan is to award them with a start date the day after school ends.
Okay, all right. And, and a finish date before.
A finish date before it starts again. That's, that's the goal.
Are they gonna be wider?
They are. They're gonna be one panel wider, so yes, yes, sir. They are gonna be wider because they are too narrow at this point.
Yeah.
And give Sheila a phone number when, when you hand it out.
I'll, I'll take it. That, that road is so narrow, the whole thing.
Move right along, Tim.
I think that's your area, Paul.
Yeah, definitely I want her to have a phone.
Next item I have is, we're requesting that the board approve the hiring of Neil Schaefer to perform the C and I services for the Bozeman Road widening project and authorize county engineer to begin negotiations with him on a price.
Okay.
Second, but, uh, when's the construction gonna start out there?
It will most likely start first quarter of twenty-twenty-three. But this is one of the steps that we've got to have in order to get approval from MDOT, so we want to head, go ahead and get in, get ahead of it.
We got any utilities left to move?
There are two that are currently out there moving. But, yeah, they should be done Februaryish.
We looking at early next year anyway.
Right.
Yeah, good deal.
Motion by Sheila, second by Trey. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Move right along, Tim.
Requesting, uh, permission to advertise for the repair of a posted bridge on Clarkdale Road. This is the, that first bridge just north of Green Oak. It's got, currently posted at eight tons.
North of Green Oak, okay.
All right, Sheila.
Yes, right by Ronnie's house.
That's not me. That's two and five, it says.
Motion.
All right, motion by Trey.
Second.
Second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We gonna be getting a lot of phone calls out that way.
Yes, sir. Understood.
Give him Sheila's number?
Yeah, give him Trey's number.
Yeah, give him Trey's number.
I don't remember me having that.
Those people don't complain that much.
What?
They don't complain that much.
Oh, definitely I'm giving you your number. Cause they be calling me. Go ahead, Tim.
Okay, item forty, I'd like to, uh, wait two weeks and present that again in two weeks. Uh, item forty-one, this is a form that we do every year for MDOT. It's called the Executive Compensation Transparency Act Form. Authorized, we're asking for the, uh, board president to be authorized to sign this.
Move.
Motion by Carl, second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
All right, that's all I have.
All right, uh, you continuing to work on that, uh, that second step on that road on north?
Thank you for that. The next step on that is to get an engineering company on board. Uh, what we need to do is determine the best, most economical route for us to get from point A to point B. And that will happen through the environmental process, which is the first step of any engineering project.
All right, well.
I guess our next step would be to select an engineer to, to work on that project.
Okay, let's, let's try to have some type of proposal on selecting engineer next meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. President, just a couple of things real quick for Tim, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
On item forty, let's make sure we have that back in front of us next.
Oh, definitely.
Next meeting. I know you said you would. And also on the bridges, if you would send us an email on what bridges we have left to, to do as far as upgrade.
Okay.
Just, just a little quick email to all of us.
Will do.
Okay, appreciate it.
Will you make sure that they're on the right, in the right place, too, this time? You know, they kind of designed their, started their design in the wrong place the last time.
You mean, the environmentals didn't match the right way.
Oh, understood. Yes, or yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm thinking that. Can you keep a little closer eye on them and be the point man with MDOT? Cause I was asked by MDOT for, for you to be the one that does all the discussions with them from now on. They're getting too many chiefs and not enough Indians and different messages going in different directions, so they want one man to be, to, to gather the information and convey it to them.
I'd be glad to be that person.
Okay, that was a direct call from the executive director for you to be in charge, so just wanted to convey that to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If that's it, we'll move right along to Mike. Our attorney. If I'm skipping to him.
Is zoning, no zoning?
No, nothing.
All right. That is resolution to support Madison County Business League and Foundation.
Yeah.
Good morning. So, simple item. Uh, uh, we were, uh, at the last meeting, the Madison County Business League, uh, presented their legislative wish list on behalf of the county for the twenty-twenty-three session that begins in January, so this confirms officially that wish list. So, there are four items on your wish list. First is funding for Bozeman Road and reunion, crossing Parkway. This, uh, this is the primary objective for funding from the state legislature, and it's the highest priority. But you have two, three and four. Two is, uh, fiber to the home broadband connectivity. Three is funding for stormwater, drainage water and sewer projects. And four is expansion and widening of Interstate fifty-five between four hundred sixty-three and reunion, crossing interchange. So, there are four objectives. First is, uh, Bozeman Road, bridge and road. So, uh, this will be presented to the Mississippi Legislature in January as your legislative objectives.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Carl, the second, second by Gerald. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
One, one thing, one thing that I wanna make sure, and I appreciate you putting this together because it's very accurate. I'm not sure I'd wanna call it a wish list. This is, this is our priorities, all, you know, all four of them. And, and, um, you know, and they've worked very well with us in the past and, and, um, we expect them to do so this year as well. And so, you know, it's something that is very important for the county, all four of those items, so.
Well, the, it, it says resolution identifying legislative objectives for the benefit of the citizens of Madison County for the twenty-twenty-three legislative session.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Moving right along, Greg.
Morning.
Good morning.
Tim.
Couple of things for you today. First is item forty-three, which is the C D B G discussion. Uh, last year, we applied for a C D B G grant for the Kearney Park wastewater system. Uh, that was the, the project with running cameras down the pipes and installing sleeves where necessary. Uh, that application was rejected by the C D B G folks. Uh, we applied for that through C M P D D. Uh, it's about time to look at our next steps or what we're looking for next year for the C D B G applications. Uh, C M P D D has a process that we have to go through to request their help, so it doesn't necessarily have to be a vote today, but probably at the next meeting, they're gonna need a vote for any projects we would like to apply for.
Yeah, we're gonna do that, uh, same project.
Okay.
We would, we, we would, I think the, um, the ask, we, we had to increase the amount we were willing to, um, participate.
Entirely correct. The issue, according to C M P D D, was last year we, the match was ten percent.
Yeah.
And the folks that make those determinations decided that was a touch low, according to C M P D D.
Is that a motion that you gonna make?
The motion, I'll make the motion that we go, um, and apply for the same grant and increase our match. Uh, probably with twenty-five percent. Uh, probably with twenty-five percent.
That, that was the suggestion from C M P D D as the low end, yes, sir.
It was, okay.
Well, that's, just go to twenty-five percent.
How much is the project and how much is the grant and how much is the match?
The, the most we can ask for on the grant is seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The project at last year's estimates, uh, eight hundred and twenty-five or so. Uh, so eight hundred and twenty-five thousand would be kind of the starting point, and twenty-five percent of that is two hundred and six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
Alright, motion by Carl, who's second then?
I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, I second it, but we're going to use the same engineering company?
Same, yeah, just go the same because they got all the numbers already.
Okay.
Wait, what, engineering company?
The engineer last time was Wagner.
Yeah, Wagner, they hit.
It's probably not a good idea.
And the reason I ask this is because last time, we cut this thing real short, and that was an issue too, as far as time for everybody getting their, getting their numbers in. So if we approve it and move forward with it, they will have plenty of time now to do their work and.
Okay, there is also a resolution C M P D D requires, which I'll get in front of y'all at the next meeting.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Assuming the vote passes, I don't think the vote's been taken yet, but assuming the vote passes, I'll get that in front of y'all at the next meeting.
Alright, motion by Carl, second by Gerald, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I'm going to sustain on that one.
Motion, carry.
Alright, item forty-four is the Clearwater Group Engagement Renewal, uh, similar to the federal legislative monitoring service from Butler Snow. Uh, Clearwater does, uh, kind of the state level stuff for Madison County, and their engagement expires at the end of the year. This is a request to renew that engagement.
Motion.
Motion by, uh, Trey, that's second.
I'll second.
Second by Gerald, uh, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. What else, Greg?
Alright, the final thing I have for you today is I'm going to ask this board to acknowledge the updated E W P cost estimates. Uh, you acknowledged some at the last meeting, but N R C S came back and had some thoughts on what perhaps could be done differently. It did lead to a slight cost increase, uh, about fifteen thousand for the county, fifteen thousand for the City of Canton, and the City of Canton has agreed to contribute half of the twenty-five percent match.
Alright.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Carl, I'll make the second, and in discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
That's it for me, there is one item for executive session, but for now, that's it for me.
Alright, moving right along to our control in the side.
Um, number, good morning.
Morning.
I have number forty-six, which is the budget amendments and the cash transfers.
Motion.
Motion by Trey.
Second.
Second by Carl, in discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
Items forty-seven through forty-nine is the general claims docket and two payroll dockets.
Move.
Second.
Uh, motion by Carl, second by Trey, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
And the last item, number fifty, is approval of the Fleet Corps Claim Docket.
Motion.
Motion by Trey. Second by Carl, all in favor? All opposed, motion carry.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Alright, thank you. Right along.
Nothing, Mr. President.
Uh, hi sheriff.
Just one item, just, uh, need to get a motion to include our inmate meal count for November of twenty-twenty-two into the minutes, please.
Motion. Motion by Trey, second by Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
That's all I have, thank you.
Old business. Alright, now we entertain, uh, you being, nah, you being come back when we come out and take the session.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I'm not, I want to go to executive session.
Well. Well, what it going to be for, litigation?
Personnel.
Personnel.
Those determination?
Motion by Carl, second by Gerald, personnel.
Executive session?
Executive session.
Okay, vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, executive session vote?
As you have personnel.